Hello, Las Vegas. And welcome to the 100 Black Men Meet the Chiefs Town Hall Meeting. I'd like to introduce to you this afternoon, the President of the 100 Black Men of Las Vegas, Mr. Gentry Richardson. President Richardson, take it away.
Thank you, thank you, Rhonda. First of all, on behalf of 100 Black Men in Las Vegas, I want to thank you all for attending this webinar, and especially, I'd like to thank Chief Cedric Andres and Chief Louis Molina and Deputy Chief Jim Seabock, who I've met all of you guys before. It's good to see you again. So, thank you, and I sincerely mean to thank you guys for taking the time out, for participating in this webinar. What I'd like to do is just start off and give each of you a chance to tell us a little bit about yourselves, and I'll start with you, Chief Andres.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, Gentry. Thanks for the invitation, always good to speak to our community and be a part of this particular format with 100 Black Men. So, I'm Chief Cedric Andres, and I've been at the Henderson Police Department now for three years, I've been the chief for two, probably a little bit more than that in my active capacity. I have about 28 years of law enforcement experience. Started my law enforcement career out at Angola State Prison, and then from there, I worked at the New Orleans Police Department, and then on to Arlington, Texas Police Department. And I got the opportunity and great fortune to come to the great state of Nevada and become the Henderson Police Chief, as I said, now for the last two years. Married, wife and two kids, very proud of them and everything that they do, daughter, you know, just recently got her master's degree along with my wife from UNLV, and I call my little mini-me TJ, he's gonna be a senior next year at Texas Tech. You know, for me, a big thing about me, Gentry, has always been a community-oriented police officer, believe in those values as a chief. You know, I really worked hard on my education, I got a master's degree in criminal justice, then have taken and had the opportunity to take a litany of leadership training. So, I'm very excited to be here and be a part of this community, and just to share a little bit about my background with you.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Seabock.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for having Gentry and your organization and 100 Black Men, it's an honor to represent Sheriff Lombardo. My name is Deputy Chief Jim Seabock, I've been with Metro, in July it'll be 28 years as well, like Chief Andres, and so I've grown up out here in Las Vegas. Throughout my career at Metro, I've had various positions, like most, like my peers, worked our way up the ranks, positions in narcotics, I was a canine handler and supervisor, worked in the counterterrorism division, I was fortunate to be a captain at five different assignments to include a couple substations, the counterterrorism center, the SWAT Bureau, and our training bureau. So, I was promoted by Sheriff Lombardo at the beginning of 2020, which was quite a year for all of us, on top of that, I was promoted that year, so it brought quite the challenges. And so, I'm over our community policing division here at Metro, our patrol divisions divided into two different chiefs, I'm one of them, I oversee eight different substations, and those are the substations that are around the valley, your traditional substations, your bold and area command, northwest, northeast, southeast, et cetera. And on a personal note, I've been married, it'll be 25 years this August, I have twins, boy-girl twins, that are going into high school here in town, and throughout all this, I was, I have a real supportive wife who supported me going back to school, I recently got my masters about two years ago, and things are fantastic, Metro's a great organization, and more importantly, I appreciate taking the time, from when we met in person, it was great speaking with you, and I appreciate the time you guys are taking to hear from us tonight.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Chief Molina.
Good evening, and thank you, Gentry, for the invitation to speak with your members and those in the community that are watching tonight. My name's Chief Louis Molina, I'm the chief for the Department of Public Safety for the City of Las Vegas. I've been in my current role almost six months now, I'm getting here in January. For those that don't know, the Department of Public Safety in Las Vegas oversees the city's jail, we also have the animal control, and we have limited duty police officers who are known as our marshals, that patrol in specific sectors of the city, which is our tourist corridor in Fremont Street, our city facilities, and our beautiful city parks, and recreational areas of the city. I have over 20 years experience in law enforcement, starting my career out in the NYPD, worked in various commands within the NYPD, had the opportunity to work in the two other pillars of our criminal justice system, having worked in the District Attorney's Office in Brooklyn, New York, and also have worked in jails, second largest jail in New York State, Westchester County, and also working in Rikers Island for the City of New York as well. So, the law enforcement, my law enforcement career has done a lot for me, my wife Shannon has been with me every step of the way, we'll be married 20 years in July, so this coincides with my career, and she's been a real supportive anchor for me. And the law enforcement career has given a lot to me, too, I was able to attend graduate schools and scholarships at Columbia University, as well as in Maris College, and had the opportunity to attend Harvard Business School General Management Program, and a lot of that education really helped me sort of advance a lot of things within the law enforcement that I think I needed today.
Thank you. And guys, I think from a 100 perspective, we believe that it's important that we get to know the men behind the badge. It's important for our youth and our community to get to know the men behind a badge, and so some of the questions I'm gonna ask is, is really for the community to really understand, and I'd like for this to be the first of a series, but I, it's really getting to understand the makeup of the different police departments slash agency, agency, and really some of the things that you're doing, and efforts that are being made in the community, and some of the challenges that you, that you know needs to be addressed. I met with one of you who said, I think, and it was really great to hear that, it starts with leadership, and that, and coming, me coming from Chicago, and I understand that leadership, the leadership is definitely a reflection, and Los Angeles, of what, how a police department operates, and what they will be and what can happen. So, I wanna, I appreciate you guys being on here as leadership, because I think all would agree that the accountability is, starts, I mean, even as a president of the 100 Black Men, I look at it as, it starts and ends with leadership, and your organization is a reflection of that. So, one of the ones to ask is, why did you choose a career in police, in law enforcement? I'll start with you, Chief Molina.
So, for me, I was very fortunate, I think diversity is important, and I think that when you see people that have sort of lived in the community and neighborhood that you've grown up in, and you see them in various careers, you tend to sort of lean towards getting involved in that professionally. So, for me, my best friend Steve, who I've known since kindergarten, his father was in the NYPD, and he was sergeant in the NYPD, I had other neighbors within my community, happened to be Latinos, African-American men that were in the police department, and in having those relationships with those gentlemen influenced my decision to wanna enter law enforcement. So, seeing someone like me in that position is what motivated me to wanna join the law enforcement community as a profession. So, that was really the driving factor. And then, once I was given the opportunity to do so and climb up through the ranks, it became more important for me, as a Latino man, a person of color, that I wanted to be able to have more of an impact in my community, in a leadership position, where I can continue to build more equity, well, at that time, for those that didn't get those opportunities. But that's really what initially drove me to be within law enforcement, and then, once I joined the law enforcement community, wanted to be the best and mental and representative of that community in the law enforcement departments I've worked in.
And Deputy Chief Seabock, what, why did you choose a career in law enforcement?
So, for me, it's kind of a different story, I didn't grow up in a police family, like a lot of law enforcement did, but what I can tell you is, the impact a positive role model plays, as well as someone identifying and reaching out to you. So, I had recruiters come to my high school, because Metro had a program, which called the cadet program, where you hire on at 18 years old, right after high school, and you get to do various positions within the police department that do not require carrying a gun, it's a civilian position, and if you successfully go through that program, and then, when you turn 21, you'll be in the police academy. So, for me, the impact was these recruiters coming up to our high school, talking to some of my peers, some of my friends, their family was in law enforcement at the time, and so, it gave me a little bit of interest, but that positive influence, and that someone reaching out and identifying that, hey, this might be an option for you, and it was just like a fellow chief just said, you know, once you get in it, you just recognize the impact that you can have, the positive influence that you get to bring to the table, it was definitely rewarding, and there is no doubt, I wanted to just continue to grow and stay with this department, and so it's been really, really been great.
Thank you. Chief Andres, what about you?
No, I think I shared the same similarities, mine was a little bit different, you know, I come from a small town in Port Arthur, Texas, and my parents decided to move me to New Orleans when I was in the eighth grade, and it was really quite a different experience there, right, coming from a very small town where all your family lived, that, and moving in New Orleans where the crack epidemic started. And I remember being placed on a car as a young, you know, juvenile that was playing basketball, but because it was unintended consequences for me, because guys took off running, that was probably doing some mischief, we stayed, and we kind of got placed on a car, and it gave you kind of a disdain, right, like, what's going on, I didn't do anything wrong, I'm just out. And what, that, it started that way, because in the community, they really didn't have a lot of relationships, but what transpired out of that was, I had two officers that actually lived on my block, and I got to see the other side of law enforcement, because that male would come out, and he's like a father figure to me today, he's a New Orleans police officer, and he started by saying, hey, you know what, I wanna build a relationship with you guys, and we did it through sports, and he taught us a lot about how, you know, to make the right decisions, seeing that even though some of those things add unintended consequences, explaining the realities of the communities that we lived in, through that, you know, that gave me a passion to wanna learn more. And, you know, one of the things he talked to us, if you wanna make a difference in the community, then come be a part of an organization where you can make a difference. And I got an opportunity to do that, and when I joined the corrections, it was just a great start for me to see guys that were incarcerated, and to see that, you know, a big decision, what happens in neighborhoods is choices that you make, that those guys and those individuals that were in Angola were probably not much different than me, but they made bad decisions. And going into policing, it allowed me to expand upon that, to say, you know, I have a greater reach now, I truly can go into neighborhoods through my experiences in working in corrections, and now begin to educate and empower, but also to improve and make neighborhoods better, and as a minority police officer, to be able to also communicate with my partners and talk about those unintended consequences, and saw sometime how it can leave minority communities scarred. So, we gotta explain the why, we have to show up in communities there to help, but we also have a job to do.
Okay, and so, what would, and one of you could chime in here, what would you say the biggest challenges, as far as being a chief or a leader of a department, that, that, I mean, it's gotta, you never know what's gonna happen in the next minute, what are some of the biggest challenges, you would say?
You know, I would say the biggest challenges for me, as a police chief, was coming from a different organization, you know, a friend of mine said, the toughest thing you'll ever do is go to an outside organization as a police chief, because the first thing that you're coming into organizations is to take an examination of that organization, but that organization also has a culture, and although you may be coming in to make improvements, it's really hard to get into an organization and spend your time wanting to make improvements and say that, I'm not trying to change us and where we came from, but great organizations are always looking to get greater, and that's been, you know, it's been a huge mountain to climb over the last three years. I can say that within those challenges, that, you know, it's a people business, right? As police chiefs, you know, we have a lot of things that we're working on and strategic plans, but we also have labor contracts that we have to navigate through, we have to be able to understand that, you know, our officers do have due processes, but, you know, you spend a lot of your time as a police chief, you know, inside of litigation hearings, dealing with discipline, and also trying to affect organizational culture. So, those things are tough, they're very tough as we continue to evolve as a community, and embracing the fact that, you know, in communities and policing, we all are in a reform mode, because, you know, quite honestly, when you think about law enforcement, we haven't always been on the right side of things, right? Law enforcement in the past has been used in a negative connotation to do things in communities that police officers shouldn't do, and so, you have to embrace that part of it, right? The part of talking with, the most important part of it, the cultural experiences of an exploding community, but also understanding your own biases and the differences, and continuing to educate our officers on the importance of constitutional and procedural justice police.
Okay, and so, anybody, anybody else wanna talk about the challenges, biggest challenges?
Yeah, I would say, you know, I mean, when you're managing large organizations, unlike the chief said, I mean, managing people is always challenging, but I think that we have, the last year has been the ultimate test for leadership in any organization, or even more so when it came to policing. Not only did we have to deal with a country that was shut down because of a pandemic, that saw thousands, tens of thousands of people killed, dealing with reform issues within policing, where communities across the country want policing to be part of their community, public safety is a shared responsibility, and police cannot help provide public safety to communities, if there's not relationships between the police and the communities that they serve. So, it all hit us all at once, but at the same time, our police officers, our correction officers, our public safety officers that work in detention centers and provide animal control services, they also had to deal with their own personal challenges with the pandemic, losing of loved ones, but still coming to work every day to provide public safety services to many of the vulnerable communities that really need police in them, so that elderly people can go out and be safe going out to the store, children can play in our parks. So, it's been a really, really tough year, but I tell you, police departments, law enforcement agencies across the country have great agility and great resilience, and I think that we are gonna be much stronger from a character standpoint, mentally stronger coming out of this.
And I'll just add quickly, so I don't take up too much time, I agree with my peers, the biggest challenge is for me, like I said, I promoted a year ago, and six weeks into my promotion, COVID hit, and there's no playbook on how to police in a pandemic, there was, there was nowhere you could look, say, well, how does that agency, or how does that city do it? Everyone was trying to learn and leap through this at the same time, you had to address the concerns of the community, of course, and then, you also had to address the concerns and the wellness of your officers, and what's being asked of them as essential employees, being out in the public, and then, you know, after the start of COVID, then, and, you know, and then in May, we started having protests, which was something we had not seen to that level here in town, and then, keep going into the fall, when we've never had to police a community when there was no school in full-time, going in person, and so, all of 2020 provided unique challenges for all of law enforcement and for our community as a whole, because it didn't just affect us, it impacted everybody, and so, those challenges from a leadership perspective were, in my opinion, significant, and were something that we'll look out for years to study and learn from and draw upon. And then, the biggest challenge still, as a chief, in my opinion, is the complexity of the job of a police officer, and making sure that they, my biggest challenge or concern always is, are my officers at the ground level getting the training that they need to be effective in doing their job? Are we communicating to them of the issues that they're seeing? Are we telling them, are we making sure their expectations are very clear, and do they have the training that I expect them to have to do the job that I expect them to do? And so, to ensure that the communication is being pushed down to that very lowest level, to that, I always always say, does that officer on graveyard at 2:00 in the morning understand what I expect him or her to do out there on that call, and do they have the training to do that properly? And so, those are the challenges that I've seen over this past year, that continue to remain a focus as I do my job.
And I just wanna say, for those that are listening in, we do have a Q and A section, and we'll use the last 10 minutes or so to take on any, take on some questions that I will select for the panelists, so if you have questions, just feel free to enter them into the Q and A section. Yeah, I would, I'd say even as police officers or chiefs, it's even, what's it like, just when you're, do you, when you're, are you always in chief mode or police mode, or do you look forward to being, when you get home and get around, because, because I, sometimes I have friends that come by, and they're still, like, say, man, just, they still kind of like, got the, you know, you're talking, but they still got that police feel about them, and so, I mean, how is, how do you, how do you deal with it? How do you take that, and, you know, I mean, you probably got a certain group of friends, but how do you, how do you deal with that? How do you, what do you look forward to about that, as far as being able to just, I don't do, be some, hang it up? I know it's being, it's not really being somebody else, because it is who you are, but what does it feel like? Because it just seems like every, you're always on the clock, in that mode, more than, you know, I mean, more than a lot of other people would be in their jobs.
Well, I'll tell you this, Gentry, when I get home, that chief, I know stars come off, the wife's the real chief, she's, I've become just the cadet or the rookie, but, you know, it is, these are big jobs, they're very big jobs that you have, and we have a lot of responsibility, but, but you really have to do that, you have to unwind and unplug, you know, and, you know, being a new chief, you know, you know, at two and a half, you know, years, I had to really train myself to do that, I had to realize that, you know, even though with the enormity of the job, that I had to take care of myself, you know, so, I try to find those times where I can unplug, you know, and, you know, you can give it to your deputy chiefs to allow you to do that, you know, but, you know, honestly, as you're building organizations, and, you know, Louis and I are, you know, coming into the area, you know, you have a responsibility to get the culture right, you know, and you develop relationships, but I can tell you, even through all of those things, and the 24-hour nature of the job, you have to have self-care, because, you know, in order for you to be effective as a leader, you have to make sure you're taking care of yourself.
Does that get communicated down through your, through your force, where it's, you know, because I can see how intense it could be if you're in that mode all the time?
No, and that's a good point, I'll say, Gentry, because I completely agree with what Cedric was saying about the ability to unplug, and to make sure that you look around, and you don't always look at things through that same lens, that you have to, you know, going home to your wife is very humbling, because she will put you in the place where you need to be, but to your point about the ability to unplug as an officer, if you think about the President Obama's Task Force in 21st Century Policing, that was one of the things that if officers weren't getting the wellness, they weren't getting the rest, and that would always lead to a rise in use of force, or that was a contributing factor, and so, it's important that our officers know that, and our supervisors all the way up the chain, are making sure that they have some employee wellness is a major part, you know, their physical fitness and taking care of themselves plays a factor, so it is important to unplug.
You know, I'm very blessed to, like my colleagues here, to work in a career that I love to do very much, but you have to have balance, and for me, the way I create that balance is, I'm very, very fortunate to have very, very strong lieutenants, both on my marshal side and on my correction side, I support them and empower them, they're strategic thinkers, you know, granted, there's levels of decision-making that I have to make, and that has to fall on me as the chief, but if we support and mentor our command staff, and we have confidence in them, then it allows, I know for me, it helps me and allows me to really balance the great responsibility of the chief of a large city, especially here in the valley. So, it's important that, you know, the people that support you up your ranks, that they also continue to support the people that they oversee, so our lieutenants have confidence and support in our sergeants, and our sergeants have confidence and support in our officers, and what you're able to do is really develop strategic thinkers throughout the whole organization, that all of, you're not making every micro decision that has to be done in a department, it's impossible for a chief to make every decision in the department, the job is too dynamic, the responsibility is too great, but you have to support your people to help you navigate through all those issues.
So, so we know that there's always the relationship piece between law enforcement and the community, and it's, and it's, and it's, it's one, it's always one misstep away from another issue. How important is it to you that, that there's, and I guess, I know what the answer is, but how important is building a good relationship to you, with, a good relationship with the community to you, and how do you model that? How do you try to get that through the rest of your departments, your organization?
It's vital, you know, I think, you know, like I said earlier, public safety is a shared responsibility, for a long time, police has always had a sort of stakeholder paradigm, everybody's a stakeholder in public safety, and we talked about it earlier, about leadership, chiefs, leaders define the culture of their organization, and when the leader of that organization articulates to its workforce that the community is vital to be able to provide public safety, it does have a trickle-down effect, but you also have to embed them within the ethos of the organization, where you empower officers, sergeants, lieutenants, to meet with members of the community, right? You wanna build those relationships when there's not any conflict, at the moment you have a conflict or a critical incident or a critical situation, that's not the time where you're gonna try to build a community to support you, whereas you're building that for us is vital, not only on our marshal side, dealing with our sort of law enforcement responsibilities in our three key areas, but also in our jail, right? We need community bridges to those that are re-entering our communities from incarceration, to help support them, so that they're not recidivizing and coming back into the jail system, or the criminal justice system as a whole. So, community relationships and partnerships is vital to the success of what we do.
Yeah, and I'll echo that, obviously, the rise and fall in any organization is communication, and then policing is no different, we are only successful without, unless we're partnering with the community, and, you know, when you look at police legitimacy, how are we seen in the eyes of the community, and having those relationships is what makes that difference, is, that's why we, you know, I know all the departments we're talking here today, all have community outreach programs, they have community policing sections dedicated just for that, you know, at Metro alone, we average, because we're large, we average right around, when there's not COVID, we were averaging roughly 150 different community events a year, that's one every three days, and we recognize that we're not going to be successful, and when I look back on my career, it wasn't always like that, until you had some of the leadership that have come through with the sheriffs, to include Sheriff Lombardo, to where it's changed, that police legitimacy is important, the example I always try to show everybody is, our homicide solve rate, although we don't wanna have any homicides, when we do, our solve rate is hovering around the 90% level, and it doesn't get to that point because of just good detectives, it gets to that point because when we go knock on doors, people are answering and they're willing to cooperate, because they see the police as part of the solution to what is going on in that respective neighborhood, and so, it's our job to make sure that we don't lose that trust, that legitimacy, and, because years ago, that wasn't always And uh cuz years ago, that wasn't always the case. And uh so that community relationship is everyone's gonna say is imperative for a successful police department to to get the job done.
Yeah, I I think what something that a lot of people don't know is with uh Las Vegas Metro is that. Uh Sheriff Lombardo, that's that's an elected position. And so you're you're literally you're voted into that position by the community. So is 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 one thing, so is is you know, is is. This is is what's unique about and not like the other departments is is not is not governed by federal, state, city. Or any of that, it's literally an independent agency that 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 protects protects Las Vegas and non-incorporated, you know. Uh counties in in Park County, but it's important to understand that there has to be, I think, especially not not minimizing the other the other. Uh Henderson or Public Safety, but is is one of those few situations where as a community, if you're not happy with going on. You can literally vote another way, so.
Right, you you'd be voted out, right?
So I I think it's I think it's something that everyone should understand that is 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 important that is is with Las Vegas. Especially the Las Vegas Metro Police Department, that there is a community relationship. And that is and is driven because uh because the community does have a say, has has actually has a voice. As far as what happens there. When how important so when we're looking at this, um it always say and 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 I and I talk to police officers, I know I have and. And they and I have good relations when they and often they say it always is really comes down to training. With a lot of incidents that have happened, it comes down to training or frequency of training or having the money to the to do the right types of training. Um have there been any training changes or or things been in in your training programs? That you've done to help the officers better serve the community?
You you know, Gentry, for me, um one of the things that I brought to the organization when I first came as a deputy chief was geographic-based policing. And we we talk about community policing, it's been talked about a lot, right? And you know, officers talk about, hey, we all got beats. Uh but geographic-based policing for me was uh uh something that uh was very passionate about. Because it discusses the importance of putting officers in the community for a a period of time to become stakeholders. Um you know, and and not all communities you go through and you deal with uh a theft from a vehicle, that may not be the most pressing thing to that community. Uh it could be the neighborhood or juvenile issues that maybe happen there, it could be parties that's going on there, it could be graffiti. Geographic-based policing allows that officer to infuse himself into the community and become a part of it. And the job of our officers each and every day is to go out and be effective, you know, we talk about this acronym at Henderson called PAVE. And what we ask our officers to be to talk about is how are you being purposeful, active, versatile, and effective? Each day that you come in, that's the thing that we want them to ask to themselves. Did you police the same? Did you do something different? Because police work is a contact sport, you know, we get better through building police relationships. You get better through understanding the undercurrent issues that's going on in the community and being very intentional uh about that and so. Those programs are important, uh we recently uh but when you talk about on the internally with our officers, we were a part of ABLE. Uh which is a program out of Georgetown University called Active Bystandership for Law Enforcement. Uh because that talks about the importance of of the new city bill that's uh I mean uh Assembly Bill that came out AB three. And it talks about intervention and we've had intervention and it a duty to intercede in our policies. But ABLE goes forward uh through through this program, it talks about the duty to intercede just when you may see. Officers that are violating a policy, your duty to act and to try to redirect that person. Uh and it talks about the importance of building uh officer health and wellness. Uh and so as you look at these pieces, we have to continue to provide those training to our officers. Because unfortunately, today in Lawrence, we wear a lot of hats, you know, uh we were never supposed to be mental health clinicians, right? But we are, we get what we get called to those calls and have to be there to be that community act uh conduit. Or to be able to assess situations where training is always applicable. So whether you're looking at crisis intervention calls, what are you looking at? How do we uh you know, help our uh vulnerable populations? Uh the police find themselves on the forefront, so training is always applicable, it's always involving. Uh and we have to continue to reinvest and educate our officers so that we have better outcomes, but we also are servicing the community uh in a better way.
Chief Molina?
You know, I mean, policing at the end of the day, in many communities, is really the face of government. But one of the things that we've done in training, especially with our marshals, that's the biggest. Public is understanding what the other function with the city government that can help aid people, right? No longer do we want the criminal justice system to be the only system where we engage with the community. And that's the only system we have to go to, right? So working with our Department of Community Services and other departments within the city of Las Vegas. Sometimes that's county resources where we can leverage those resources and direct and refer community members to those areas. So that they can actually get the services that they need from the experts that can actually help them. You know, so we're solving issues related to public health, the chief talked about vulnerable populations, we do a lot of training. Those that are suffering from mental illness, that we're diverting them to the appropriate resource to provide them the public health access that they need. Versus having it followed through the criminal justice.
Now, now now WTC, I know that you have and 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 some some committees, multicultural Advisory Committee and. Uh Citizens Use of Force Review Panels and I know uh and I and I and I do know that uh Chief Andrews, you are incorporating. Uh those kinds of kinds of things too. Um that you see that does the input from the community and those types of panels? And and I and I think I've seen some I I've seen some system types of things happen, but does does that? Does that give you some ideas of some types of changes, some types of things you you should do? In training based on that feedback that you get from the community and and panels like that?
Yes, and so uh for for us, uh we have the Metro Multicultural Advisory Committee, we have our Use of Force Board where. Uh the citizens vote on the use of force and they actually number more than the uh the officers, uh the supervisors, so they can outvote if it's approved or not. Uh we have our Citizens Review Board that if you don't like the outcome of an internal investigation, you can go to that Internal Review Board. Uh but to your specific answer, uh a lot of the uh policies that we draw upon. Uh are shared with the M-MAC Committee uh for their input and to uh hear from them and to make the changes that uh. To the some of the recommendations they might have towards it. Uh and so we do listen to the community, we do hear from them on the Use of Force Board on on changes or issues or concerns they might want to see. And then something I just want to bring up for this board is uh just recently, we had our captain testing. Uh which are the captains are the ones that lead the different stations or the different bureaus at Metro. And uh we brought in people from the community from the M-MAC Board. And actually, that was part of the uh testing process where you had to be interviewed by that board and that board scored it. And part of that score then helps the overall score for that person to achieve the rank of captain with us, so in other words. The community is helping choose the leadership that's running the stations and so. Yes, to answer your question, uh we we value what the community has and that's how we put incorporate some of it.
Okay, um I'm gonna get back, but uh so when we're looking at those types of committees, are uh. Are there challenges? I mean, would you feel as far as the representation on those committees that are looking at, let's talk about diversity. Uh looking at the diversity of the force, uh how it's represented. Um so I guess I I I want to let's put it this way, on a scale of one to ten. How comfortable are you with the divor- diversity that you have within your within your department, within your within your police, your your. Uh respective police forces? I'll start with you, uh Chief Molina.
I'm very comfortable, I mean, we're very fortunate, uh we have a very, very diverse workforce. Um about the leadership ranks, when we look at all of our lieutenant ranks and up. Um we are very well represented by women. Um we're well represented by people of color. Um you know, we can always try to be better. To to give people opportunities, but that's important because it provides us, when I have my staff meetings with with my leadership team. And it's on up for our deputy chief, it really provides a diversity of thought. Uh different journeys that each of those members from their respective community and where they come from. So that we're making decisions regarding policy, how we should move forward. Everybody's voice and lens is entered into the conversation. So I'm I'm really excited, not only about the diversity that we have here on the public safety. When you look at the city of Las Vegas as a whole, it's really one of the most diverse representative leadership workforces. That I've ever worked for and and I used to work for the city of New York, which is the the number one major city in America. And that the workforce here at the leadership level is more diverse even than in New York.
Uh WTC, back.
Uh for us, uh it is always a constant uh uh goal to continue to get to a uh fully diverse uh organization that represents the community. Uh I can tell you that uh we're not there yet, uh it's ever-changing, but what I can say is if we don't have quite that diversity to the level of uh. That equally represents the community, we still have the training uh to uh hear, you know, cultural competence training and. Uh to hear from the different uh respective uh cultures and uh that it's still trained into our officers, so although we might not have. Um the the.
Oh, awesome. Uh I'll I'll go to uh Chief Andrews, I'll go to you. As far as diversity.
Yeah, I I I I'm like Jim, uh you know, our our diversity in the makeup of our department, it it mirrors the community, but 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 that is one. That is continuing is a moving target for us, uh we we're very intentional about that uh over the last few years that I've been at the organization. Um um I've been very intentional about bringing a different diverse mindset to the command table. Uh I'm probably the first chief to now have a civilian uh part of my command team, uh which was very important to me. Uh to have someone from professional staff side to be a part of the command team, to bring in a different diversity of thought. Uh and you know, I've also added females to our command ranks. Uh and all of those things have been very important, I will tell you that when you look at diversity uh within our city, uh I want to see more. Uh you know, and we're 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 working through that and where we recruit and where we were building relationships and we're hoping through. Uh you know, the chief's uh advisory committee that we are are launching uh to continue to foster those relationships, uh you know, because recruiting. Is a is a three hundred and sixty day campaign and and you have to continue to measure that and I'll tell you one way that we go about doing that, Gentry. Uh we have a recruitment comstat meeting, very proud of that meeting. Uh we we don't just measure crime, but we look at where are we recruiting? Uh we look at the applicants through the process um and their success. Uh we look at the diversity of the process and how we can continue to evolve that process. That meeting takes place every month, I am a part of that meeting. Uh and at that time, they get to not only meet with the chief, but understand the goals of the city. Uh be because from the mayor uh to our city manager, we're we're always wanting to continue to have a more diverse workforce. But we know you have to be intentional about it, so that meeting, it takes us a long way to continue to examine where we are and where we want to be.
Nice, yeah, I I I looked at uh at the leadership level and I definitely saw some opportunities there. As far as as diversity uh with with uh with black females, just across the board, there's there's. You know, I I would say some are doing better than others, but I I definitely see there's an opportunity there. And I and it's really when we're looking at uh. Talking to especially from a hundred with a hundred black men, when we talk to our young men and we ask about their comfort level. As far as law enforcement, they're not comfortable. And so that's so then you say, well, if they're not comfortable, how do you how are you gonna join something? Or be a part of something that that you're not comfortable with or you don't have a good feel for? And I I I just want to know, when you look at that, are there are there, do you think of any programs, are you trying to put together any kinds of things to? Had take care of that comfort level and is it and then when is it, do you do you believe that doing something in a park helps that? Or is it really something you have to do with with your 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 people that are out there interacting to help with that comfort level? So how do you how do you stress that? What kinds of things do you do to help? Hopefully resolve that situation?
So Jen, are you there? Can you hear me? Sorry, I just hey, it's Chief, I had some technical difficulties, I pulled back up on my phone. Uh a couple of things I would add to that that point that you made is uh like uh Chief Andres was saying is uh we have, we all have our. Metro, we have our some specific recruitment committees uh towards that, you know, African-American Recruitment Committee and Council to try to address that. We also get engaged at uh some of the uh high schools uh to with mentorship programs. Uh we 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 focus on, there's a couple at Western High School, Valley High School, uh we have some a program going in Summerlin Area Command. And uh and also through the Harbor Program, targeting the the younger age kids for that. Uh but also, we've begun to partner with Veterans Tributes, it's a uh magnet school that's focused on first responders. Uh for police, fire, and medical, and so if we can get engaged with the younger uh age groups, uh then that will also help. Uh we believe some of those uh recruitment recruitment numbers uh for more diverse recruitment.
Okay, okay.
You know, Gentry, I'll I'll tell you, one of the things and I've talked to you about this, it's a program that we're creating, COVID didn't help us. Uh but it's gonna be in the east uh side of town and we're we're running a pilot program next year at Brown uh Middle School. And the program is gonna be titled the Hype Program, it's called the Henderson Youth Police Empowerment Program. And through that program, you know, I I'll be honest with you, I'm not gonna be more interested in recruiting police. I want to be interested in in opening our kids' minds up uh to reaching their highest potential. And I'm hoping through that relationship that we do get some officers, but um this program is very familiar with me. Uh you know, I I I had a program like that in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. Uh and we started it with, uh we looked at our juvenile recidivism rate. And we decided to target uh the schools and the communities where we saw that. And what we found when we took the study of that was the kids didn't trust the police. Uh you know, the many times for them, the the only time they saw the police when it was negative con- uh uh consequences involved. And what we got through that was to to meet them at the macro level. Uh you know, shedding the badge, you know, meeting them and talking with them and bringing them in to teach them the soft skills on what is the importance of being a man. Right, uh teaching our females what's the importance of uh of being a young lady. Uh and we did things, Gentry, like teach them how to tie a tie. We brought them to do uh areas uh to uh local businesses of people from minority communities. And we talked to them about coming from their same community and how they became entrepreneurs. And the importance of decision-making, but the importance of being a good citizen. And what our goal was exposure, getting them to see and visit our local colleges to say. Even though you may be in a situation where you don't think that you can afford to go to college, guess what? There are Pell Grants out there, uh there's areas where you can take student loans and investing in yourself is investing in your future. And we were very intentional about that and what I think we did was we won the heart and minds of those kids and that's the goal here at Brown Middle School. To win the heart and minds of our youth, to see that the police are just like them, we're fathers. We're brothers and sisters, uh and we care and we love them and you know what, we want them to be successful. And I think in order to do that, you have to be intentional. And I guess the cherry on top for me is hopefully I get some recruits out of that program to to come be a part of our organization and to continue to make our community better.
That's great, cuz I I do and I I mentioned before the man or the woman behind the badge and really. Uh getting them to uh and I encourage, we have mentoring programs, Mentor Bureau, where we want. Uh law enforcement to be a part of that mentoring and supporting either other programs, so even. Knowing about those programs and getting them out in the community and letting letting uh parents and youth know that those programs are there. And you're right, it's not necessarily to make you a police officer, it's just to have that interaction cuz you may decide to be. We have one where you may decide to be a fire uh uh a firefighter or you may decide to be an EMT or whatever, whatever it is that. You decide to do, but it's really humanizing uh uh the members of law enforcement through that interaction. Now, what what can hurt that is obviously incidents that involve escalation. Uh are there any, what what have you guys done from an escalation procedural perspective? Where you identify officers that may be more aggressive than others? Or how you or what type of training have you done to help uh as far as dealing with? Uh how do you escalate or de-escalate? Uh and what so what types of things are you doing there? Because those are the situations that always end up on camera. You know, so so now it seems like. You know, so, so now it seems like, you know, when you see a police officer jumping rope with, with kids, you, you might see that one time, but you see this other one, this other one where they got a kid down on the ground, you'd see those, you know, you'll see that 10 times. So what kinds of things are you doing as far as, as, as escalation and, um, in, ensuring that, that is equitable? Because statistics show that es- the escalation is not even close to being equitable.
Yes. Yes, I think for us here, you know, we evaluate every, when we have an incident that gets escalated, and sometimes those incidents are escalated to force. We, we examine not only if it's a force situation, what force review, but we looked at, at everything that, that leads up to that moment, right? Because sometimes there's decision making that's being made that is for, um, and, and, and even if force is justified, we still review that with our officers to see if there's another way that we could have done things better, right? So it's constant training, it's constant having senior officers mentor younger officers, right? Uh, we send our academy and training staff to go to training on, on force and things like force sciences, but also the importance of communication and, and help, helping our offices deal with people that are suffering from mental illness and other vulnerable populations. And identifying other resources, um, sometimes mental health practitioners that can help us to deal with a situation so that it doesn't escalate into a point of a physical confrontation, God forbid, a fatal confrontation with members of the public.
And, and W T C, but I, I, I understand that you have, uh, really a metrics type of process by, by officer where you guys are tracking the types, tracking escalations and escalation incidents and literally flagging and, and, and cause I, I'll tell you that one of the things with the whole George Floyd situation in Charlotte, they said, well, he was having situations all the way up to that point. So then you go, well, if he was having those situations, what was being done? And it, it, it sounds like you guys are, uh, that, uh, metros got some really sophisticated types of things that you're doing to track escalation?
That's correct. So, uh, there, there's several things that we do, that the training starts just like everybody, uh, you know, in the academy to where we're talking about throughout about de-escalation and, uh, other force options and focusing on communication of, of, above all. Uh, and then even before they graduate, we go through the adopt a cop program where officers are put back into, uh, different locations, whether it be the, uh, rec center in, in the neighborhood or the LGBTQ centers, and they're without their uniforms. And they're just interact with the public. And then, you know, a few days later, we, they'd say, hey, you know, these were our officers and the officers just recognize, uh, that the neighborhood and, and it, it, it's a two-way street with that. So it's all part of their training to help uh, understand the area in which they're going to be asked to serve and to police. And then we have, uh, our training where we have all different facets of de-escalation training. Uh, we look at all of our critical incidents. We have a critical interview team and that's what goes before that, uh, citizen panel. And what we try to do is identify, uh, what led that, what led up to that. And then at that point, uh, we, uh, train on that, uh, all of next year. And so we don't want to have mistake of fact shootings. We don't want to, uh, we're like, for example, we focus on making sure people go into recovery position. Uh, we changed our use of force, uh, policy for that to include the duty to intervene. And then another aspect, uh, of what you brought up is, uh, we have an early identification, uh, and intervention program, or E I P, it's called. To where we're tracking officers who've been involved in a certain amount of use of force within a year's time, or if they've been in traffic accidents within a, a certain period of time. If, uh, we also track if they're involved in a significant event that could be, uh, also add to the stress of that officer. So for example, they were on a, a child drowning, or they were in a, uh, they were at one October. And so all these factors of stressing the job or previous incidents, we track and so it, it flags, uh, when it hits a threshold. It goes to that supervisor, uh, that supervisor then has to review everything that's led up to it, look at that officer's performance with more scrutiny than, uh, maybe before. And so it's a, it's a way for us to try to stay ahead of that before you have an officer that has 20 plus complaints is out there as a training officer. And that, that should never have been, that should never be like we saw, uh, there in Minneapolis. And so through the intervent, early intervention program, uh, we're identifying, uh, potential issues and trying to, uh, steer it in the right direction, get that officer the help or the training that he or she may need. Uh, so we don't have those incidents that rise to the level, because I believe there's more instances of officers, as you said, seen jumping rope with the kids than they are uh, being shown on the news. Unfortunately, we don't get that kind of media, uh, play, but, uh, that early intervention, um, tracking i- i- is critical for us, uh, to, to protect, uh, uh, to, to look out for the officers, but more importantly, look out for the community which they serve.
So are you seeing a downward trend? Cause I know when 2018, 2019, I was, it was put in a newspaper that it was like, uh, 4,500 uh, uh, misconduct complaints. And that was going into 2019. Do you see that there, that what you're doing now is, is, are you seeing a reduction in the number of complaints based on the types of things you're putting in place?
Yeah, that was, that report was put out, uh, I think it was released today or yesterday, uh, you know, from a transparency standpoint. And that's where the, you know, the benefit of body one cameras come in. And to see, uh, are we seeing any trends or anything that, uh, we can get in front of if it, a, a lot of the, uh, complaints that would come in were for interaction complaints. And so do we need to work on communication with those officers? And again, as you said at the very beginning, a lot of this comes down to the leadership aspect of it. And to making sure our leaders, our, our first line supervisors and their bosses are holding these officers accountable uh, for the complaints that are coming in and making sure that they are investigated properly and, uh, that we're identifying, uh, some of those concerns.
So when you see something like that, do you go, okay, we need to go, there's some things we need to do, we need to do some process improvements or, uh, I mean, do you? I mean, how do you feel? I mean, I, I mean, so, I mean, I know, uh, Chief Andres, that it was, it was, it was, it was Las Vegas metro. But when you, are you doing those kinds of things also, like tracking individual incidents? And if there's one officer that tends to do have more types of incidents than, than another one? Because it's, it, it still gets down to, you're sitting here managing the best you can, but these things still, still happen. Uh, so how do you, how do you react to that? What do you do? Are you doing those types of, I, by the way, I think those, those types of things that you're doing as far as tracking what's happening within the individual officers is great. I don't think it, I don't think anything changes overnight. And then you put these things in place and then something comes out today that says, hey, there's 4,500 incidents. So everybody just focuses in on that. So, um, what kinds of things are you doing, uh, uh, Chief Andres to kind of help with trying to get some type of control with the incidents?
Well, you know, I think one of the big things we did, Gentry, this year was, uh, we, we wanted to institute and I, I directed my team to put together a de-escalation policy. Uh, we did just did, we had de-escalation in our use of force policy, uh, and it, it was, uh, about a paragraph. Uh, but we wanted to be real intentional and create the policy, but the next thing we did was train to it. And I'll be honest with you, you know, from our officers, they, they wanted to know, you know, why did it need to be a policy? Uh, so I visited as many trainings as I could to explain to them why de-escalation is important. Uh, to talk to them about the importance of treating our people in a procedural justice way. You know, Gentry, I, I'll tell you, I think it really comes back down to what I tell people, the golden rule. Every time I meet with an academy, I said, you know, I've been doing this job for 28 years and I think I'm blessed to do it that long, uh, because I respect people. And I understand the importance of how to treat people. And I, and I tell our recruits each and every day, you're in a people oriented business. So if, if you get in this job and you don't really like dealing with people, then there's the door, right? Because this is what we do. So you start examining that, you started talking with your officers on the, on the first day about the importance of constitutional policing and procedural justice. And then we talk to them about problem solving, right? Uh, teaching them in critical situations, how we want them to problem solve. Uh, unfortunately, like every other chief on here, we do hire from the human race, you know, and incidents do occur. Um, and, and we have to address them as police chiefs, it's our job to make sure that we educate our officers. But when we come across officers who are not fit to do this job, it's also our duty to move on from them for policing. And you have to have that. So I, I believe, you know, fundamentally, as Jim said, that we have to do a better job of educating our supervisors on what we expect, ensuring that they are inspecting what they expect from their officers. And that we understand that there are going to be incidents, um, but how are we training to it? What are we doing every day and looking at that? So yes, we track our use of forces, we look at them. Uh, right now I could tell you, uh, if my team was on here, they would tell you that chief's already got a meeting in a couple of weeks. Uh, because we're changing a little bit of our model to more evidence-based policing. And what I want to know is, you know, not just so much about the incident, you know, what's the education level of our officer? The age of the officer, the environment that he was in, uh, when was, how much sleep did he get before that use of force? You have to do a very job of being intentional based on evidence to look at not only what the officer did, but now the other side of the environmental and human terrain, uh, could we have de-escalated better? Uh, did we use time distance? You know, in policing, I'll tell you, when all of us came on these gentlemen, we were, we were all taught the speed of policing, get to the car fast, work it, because you got to get to the next one. Uh, you know, and you, when you dealt with cities like that, a lot of times the officers didn't get the soft skills on how to problem solve. So now we, we've talked more about problem solving, building in more scenario-based training, right? The more training we can get our officers on the realities of policing and what they go through, I think that's the better outcomes. And so i- it's that, and then I'll tell you, it's the bigger part of that, uh, is reaching out to our community so that they could come be a part of our citizen police academy to understand the nuances of a police officer and what we go through. Because it's important in communities that they understand that these officers, we work in a very dynamic situation. So you recently saw in Henderson, if you look at a video we put out on what are our expectations when we stop you on a traffic stop? That came out of conversations that I had with our team and they decided to jump on that themselves and put that out. Because how many people really know that when you're reaching in between or in the glove box or under the seat, that the police officer is just afraid as what may happen? So when we ask a young man, this is what we talk about in our mentoring program, right? When we ask you to put your hands on a steering wheel, there's a, there's a why to it. And then we take those mentors when you bring in them, we put them in a role of police officer. And they get an opportunity to see some of those things. We have to educate our community. We have to continue to under, to get them to understand what the officer's role is and what we would like their role in the process to, to improve outcomes.
Well, I agree. I mean, just like anybody else to walk out the door, they want to come back home safely. Uh, so, uh, there's definitely things that we need to communicate out to the community. Uh, but there's still the challenges. So I, I, I'm going to ask this question to you, Chief Molina. Um, and a lot of people, I think, has asked this a lot. Why does the police not police each other, police the police? So a lot of times we see situations where there's escalation and you'd have somebody just another, a partner or another officer is standing there. Is there, is that, is that a training thing or why, why are those situations where I've seen where a police officer will take a 16-year-old girl and throw them down on the ground for whatever reason, right? And you may have some officers standing there, and I think a lot of people don't understand why there's no intervention.
Uh, so I think it's a couple of things, right? I think you're going to see a lot more training here, helping our, our officers understand why they have a duty to intervene. I think it's also a cultural issue. This is why the leadership of an organization is important, right? The culture of the organization, they create an ecosystem where their first reaction is to protect their colleague rather than the public. But what we have to understand is when we, when we intervene in situations, we have colleagues for whatever reason, right, are going overboard, that stopping them is also helping them, right? Because it can lead to serious consequences, not only for the member of the public, but for the police officer that's involved. So I think it's a training issue. I think it's a culture issue. And what you see now is police leaders now understanding that they have to address that, right? Um, in, in, in managing its officers to get them to understand that. Police officers don't define the type of policing that should be happening in community. That's defined by the community. And that's why it's a shared responsibility. And like the chief said, when we have officers that are contrary to that mission and put not only themselves, other colleagues in the public in jeopardy by their actions, then we need to hold ourselves accountable and remove them. And I think this also speaks to the district attorney's offices and attorney general's offices that are out there. We have systems of checks and balances in this country that have not been utilized. And when you also have district attorney's offices that don't hold law enforcement offices accountable as a separate form of government, the whole system collapses, right? So then you have offices themselves defining what should the culture and ecosystem of that be? And we have to do a better job of that. We all have our roles to play and as police chiefs, we got to hold our people accountable and do everything we can and say, this person doesn't deserve to wear a badge. That badge belongs to the people. Doesn't belong to anyone individual.
Thank you. And, and I, and we got 15 more minutes. I'm going to ask, I'm going to take a couple of questions here. Uh, see, one is what are, what is the best steps to take to get hired?
So what I'll say for Las Vegas Metro, uh, we offer, uh, first step I would do is go to our website. Uh, first and foremost, because that's going to give you, uh, information on, uh, the qualifications. It's going to give you the, the, the standards, the physical fitness, as well as, uh, the hiring process and what's all involved with that. There you can also get in contact with a recruiter, uh, that can reach out to you and ask individual, uh, where you could answer, ask and answer, uh, get your questions answered, uh, with respect to the hiring process. And, uh, that they, they will then, uh, walk you through that step. And again, uh, most, uh, like I heard tonight, uh, there's also, we have, uh, extra African-American recruitment councils that will also help you through the whole testing process and the studying. And, uh, with the goal of trying to get more diverse, diversity hired on. And so those recruiters, that website is the best direction. And if not, stop at any substation, uh, flag down any officer, because, uh, there's some of the same stuff I'm saying, they will also be able to provide you in person.
Okay. And, uh, another question is what, what training would you like to see implemented? That currently isn't available?
You know, I, 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 I want to, uh, I mean, and there's a lot of training that's available, but I think the training we have to continue to enhance on, uh, especially in the current state of law enforcement, uh, is just continuing our, uh, cultural and implicit bias training, understanding communities. Uh, you know, one of, one of the big things, Gentry, is look, we, we get to hire individuals and, and going through a police department. I think we in Henderson hire the very best. I think we have very high standards. Uh, but, but you're still hiring someone from different communities and different backgrounds. And, uh, one of the things you have to do is continue to embrace upon that training. We, we're, the, the entire country is a huge melting pot and nowhere than Las Vegas, right? You know, you're just starting to see the first, uh, you know, uh, Southern Nevadians, you know, making their way in the workplace like Jim and becoming a part of the community and being leaders in the community. So we have to continue, uh, to make sure that we're educating our officers on that. Uh, because as officers deploy, uh, we're, we're, our, we're, uh, uh, you know, mandated to police the constitution. And a lot of times, uh, we, we go into different segments of the community with not a great understanding of cultural backgrounds, you know? I, I once used to tell guys when I was training in New Orleans that, you know, you'd see a guy just sitting on a porch right all day. And you know, I, my recruit member stopped in his guy and he was like, hey, we got a call and we did, it was a suspicious person, right? And this individual said, hey, look, this is my mom's house, but she won't give me a key. You know, mama's going to work and I can't get a key to the house and I'm not going to get in until five o'clock till she gets home. You know, for some people, they may think that, you know, that's a bit, I, why wouldn't mom give you a key? But there are certain cultures where that mom may do that. That person may have had some abuse issues, other challenges, and mom is helping them through it. So you got to get them to understand the nuances of that community and understand this is not of the ordinary of a person being in the community or being in a situation like this. And you do that through educating and being in the community and being intentional about those things. So we, we got to continue to do that, because I think in many of the situations we see and we come in through there, there are absolutely uh, some blind spot even for our officers, when it comes to being culturally competent about, uh, the communities that we are in. Uh, and we're, we're required to police today.
Okay. And, and here's one. Uh, it's really a, a, a very great and interesting question. When you hear the term defund the police, what's your reaction?
Uh, I, I'll tell you for me, um, what, what I would say to that, and I've said before, um, it's, it's, uh, it's a little bit hard to take, because I know the different hats I mentioned earlier that we wear. Uh, you know, I wish that when I joined the job and we had more. You know, I wish that when I joined the job and we had more social services that were responding out to those who are in mental health crises, but that didn't exist today. As we continue to strength government, those responsibilities fell on the police department. I, I think like my colleagues, if, if we were able to have the, a system in place in our community where police didn't have to respond to certain calls and others with better skill sets can handle it, I can guarantee a police officer would be all for it. But unfortunately, we have to wear those hats. And the other thing I will tell you is that when you talk about defunding police, I don't think you heard one chief on this call talk about more training. We want to see better outcomes. If we want to continue to see better police officers, we got to continue to invest in training, right? And I think we really have to start having real conversations about government, our responsibilities and the duties that we're placing on our officers. Because I think it's very important that we get down to understanding that when someone dials nine one one, they expect someone to show up. And we want to show up when there's dangerous situations. But there may be other situations, I think, as Chief Molina said, that might be better handled by that. But, but we have to start sitting down and talk about the way the government is shaped and ensuring that we put the right services in place that partner with the police department to be problem solvers. But we get the right resources to our community to fit the need of the situation that they may be involved in.
And what I would say to that also, when I hear that, it means, hey, we still have some work to do. We still need to improve. What I, what I also like to point out though, is we have a great community here in, in the whole Southern Nevada with these organizations because you, we're not hearing that here. We're hearing, yep, we still need improvements, we still need to move forward, but we, we're getting the funding to put towards training. We're building right now with the Las Vegas Police Foundation, a reality based training center. And so in my opinion, as, as Chief Andres just said, that reality based training is, is going to continue to improve us. You know, if you want to improve something, you, you got to invest in something. And so to me, training is where that investment needs to go. And this is just Jim's opinion. But a lot of what you see sometimes that shapes policing around the country comes from smaller departments where they don't have the training that some of the professional organizations on this call have. And the impact from that is consequential for all of policing. And so ideally, I would like to see these types of training centers or the types of trainings that go on here in Southern Nevada should be regional and set to a standard around the country to, to raise the level of policing nationwide, because what those consequences you're seeing a lot of times are coming out of small departments where either they don't have the repetition from the calls, they don't have the reality based training, or they don't have the proper leadership. And again, as, as the chief said, for me, to change that culture, because whoever asks this question about training is, is really spot on. If you want to change the culture, it takes leadership, it takes training, and it takes accountability. And all those three things coming to play is going to make a difference. And so when I hear that stuff, that means, yep, our job isn't done and I'm ready for that challenge, but that, that training is, is key to continue to improve policing.
It's important to recognize that funding has nothing to do with defining the type of policing you want in your community. And across the country, we have over eighteen thousand police departments. We don't have national standards across the country when it raises the police standards and how we train officers. And in funding the record, funding a mechanism in place so that we can have consistent best practices, evidence based practices across policing is going to be costly. But what we also need to do is make sure that we're funding our social service agencies to do the job to deal with a lot of the public health inequity that exists in our communities. Many of the communities of color, so that the policing is not the answer to address those issues. And that's how we get to a better place. Defunding it doesn't solve that problem.
Okay. And I'm going to do one more question. Guys, I tell you, Facebook is, Facebook is, is on, they're, they're watching, there's a lot of questions there. We got questions here and I'm going to, and, and I'm going to ask you guys, maybe we can do this in another three months, maybe do a once a quarter kind of thing. Where we're doing this type of communication because the activity is really encouraging. So the last question I have is when we're talking about the, the citizen committees and, and, and their involvement, how much involvement do they really have? Do they have, do they have input as far as, as far as hiring? Do they have influence as far as maybe something needs to be done about this officer and this officer should be taken out the job? How much, how much? I guess, I guess for lack of a better word, how much power are you willing to give these, the, these committees? Because really, if we're partnering, if you're partnering with the community, I would think they have some, some, they, they should have some strong inputs. So how, how do you score about that? How much do they have?
So for us, like I touched on here, the, the, the public, the, the police, the, the volunteers that are on the multicultural advisory committee, they get to score who they want to be as their captains and they can fail them. I mean, that would affect the overall score. So that is pretty impactful. When the citizens on the use of force board for Metro, they actually have more voting power than the representatives from the department. So they can vote to over, to, to administratively disapprove that the, the use of force that that's being reviewed. So that is impactful. We give the citizens the ability to review our internal affairs complaints. So if it wasn't investigated to the level that, that citizen felt, they have the ability to reopen the case. And so they have a lot of say so on our policies. They have a lot of say so on our, on who we're hiring or putting into positions. And so it carries a lot of weight. And as the last thing, like you said, they, we work for an elected sheriff here. And so those citizens have a tremendous amount of ability to choose who they want to be leading this police department.
Okay. And, and Chief Andres?
You know, Gentry, I, I'll tell you, as you know, we're, we're getting started with our chief's advisory committee. And, and I, and I must say that, you know, for me, to my counterparts in Metro, the sheriff invited me to the multicultural advisory board and I got an opportunity to sit down with them. And I was quite impressed that, that he was willing to, to take, you know, the hot seat when he needed to and provide that the transparency and, and explanations to that board. And I think, you know, what, what I drew from that is the cheapest, that's the way to go, right? And we've been building towards there. I'm, I'm not going to tell you that we've started that, as you know, we're getting started with that. But I think even to have that board, you have to have leaders who are willing to take that input and go back with your command teams and sit down and talk about that. But you have to be actionable, as Jim said. And they've demonstrated that in Metro. We're definitely headed that way to be actionable. One of the things I'll take it that we do, though, Jim, and we do a chief's community forum, right? We're out in the community every month, every other month in a chief's community forum. We, we are very intentional about our talk shop with the cop. And we absolutely go to those events with no agenda. You know, we allow our citizens to drive the conversation and be the scored card to us on how we're doing in their community. And I'm very proud to say in the communities that we go, the first thing that I always hear about my officers is their professionalism. The fact that they are very community oriented. But you know what? When we have to hear things that we need to get better on, we're very intentional about getting that information, researching it and then getting back the follow up, the follow through with that citizen to let them know we heard them, we investigated this and what we're doing about it. So I think that's how you build credibility. That's how you build transparency in an organization by being open and being vulnerable enough to hear the good and the bad. And I can assure you, in Henderson, we're all about that.
Chief Molina?
Yeah, so you know, us too, I mean, we're, we're, we're developing and building out what our sort of community advisories and board would look like. You know, I've only been here about six months now, but in my first three months, I reached out to your organization, other organizations in the community. To get, not only for myself to learn the culture of the valley and the city of Las Vegas, but hearing from all of you, how can we get you, because it's a lot of work on both sides, right? It's a lot of work for those citizens to volunteer their time in their full time job, being away from their kids, to add their voice to the conversation. How do we make law enforcement and community partnerships stronger? And how do we enhance that? So I'm working with my team here to put something together so that we can make sure that from area of recruitment from an area of program policy, that the community has a voice to sort of help us chart how we move forward.
Great. And, and I will say that as a hundred black men and, and, and our partners in the community, we stand ready to have representation on those committees. So I'd love to hear how we can, and, and, and how we can get representatives on those committees where they're, where they're needed. How we can ensure that there's, there's, there's strong representation on those committees. And just hearing that, and, and, and again, I would go back to Metro and I, and I know what some of the effects that committee has had. I, I will commend Metro on listening to some of the things that, that have come out of that committee and how you do give. And I, and, and our Chief Ramadan, I know he's played a key role in that. And, and, and I commend him also as far as some of the things that he's helped lead as far as getting some changes, some positive changes done within, within Metro. So again, I, I know there's some great committed people on those committees and I'd love to anyway, we can help to ensure that we, that we're getting some more representation, some people on those committees. We were glad to, to assist in that. So with that, guys, I, I just want to think, if you got any closing comments, I want to give you, again, I appreciate really you guys taking the time out to be on, be on this and be on this, have part of this discussion. And again, I, 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 hopefully, it was, it was, you got enough out of it, you'll be willing to come back in a few months so we can do it again. I feel that the community needs it. I think the listeners have more questions and and, and being able to have these kinds of things, I feel can do nothing but help the relationship. You guys have any, any closing comments before we sign off?
Gentry, Gentry, for me, for, on behalf of Sheriff Loubardo, thank you for having us. Thank you for your organization. Thank you for the members that listen on Facebook Live. And we will continue to be here. Invite us back. I'll be glad to come and speak with you, with my colleagues. It's always an honor. And, you know, the minute we stop listening is the minute we start failing. And so thank you so much for the opportunity and I look forward to doing it again here soon.
You know, thank you too, Gentry. I, I just want to say thank you for doing this. I'm going to piggyback on what Jim said and say the minute that we stop communicating as well as the minute that we don't, we don't get changed and we don't get better. So having these platforms, allowing us to communicate, to hear from our citizens, it allows us to continue to look at how we shape our department, the importance of that to our community. But also it gives us an opportunity to talk to our community about the great officers that we have. And, you know, and the officers that I can assure you that go into these communities each day here in Southern Nevada and in Henderson with a true intent to want to make our communities better, that have a servant mindset and understand the importance of the job that they have. And so I think it's important that we continue to share those things, but also from our community that we hear from them. So I look forward to these collaborative engagements. We're all about that. And you know what? An invitation is coming your way then, as well as a hundred black men, because I, I want to see you guys in our communities helping us on the ground level, being a conduit and a voice, because community policing is everybody's responsibility.
Great. Chief Molina?
Thank you, Gentry, and thank you for the board members that allowed us to have an opportunity on your platform to speak to your members and other members of the community about just our departments. I may be the one representing the city of Las Vegas and specifically the Department of Public Safety. But certainly I have an amazing team here. Our correction officers, our marshals, our animal control officers, our civilian staff. They love the city of Las Vegas and they love the community that they work for. So I, I'm proud to share a lot of our accomplishments. Thank you for the opportunity to share sort of my philosophy on, on law enforcement in general. And I look forward to continuing conversations, not only with your organizations, but with other community organizations in the valley.
And great. And I will say this, I've met with each of you and, and I will say that, that I, I feel the commitment you guys have. I know it's not just talk, just your being here says a lot. So I would say that while there is more work to do, you're willing to do that work and I feel we can make, we can, we can make things even better together. So I, I really appreciate you guys being here at a hundred black men of Las Vegas. Appreciate you being here and we look forward to speaking with you again. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Night.
Thank you, Las Vegas, for joining us for the One Hundred Black Men of Las Vegas Meet the Chiefs. We hope you had a wonderful time and we look forward to seeing you next time. Have a great evening.